I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you please do the honors?
You have. I'm pleased, Father. You're heavily bothering me, thank you, for the opportunity to gather together this evening to take care of this business at hand. We pray that you watch out for all those who have to be out in the coming storms and stuff, that they can travel safely. We pray that you meet with our city employees as they deal with the lull out of the mall, the snow that's coming. And we pray that everything that we do this evening can be used for you in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. He had the reading and approval of the minutes from March 20th, please.
Motion approved, is presented.
A motion by Hack. Second. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor of the meeting, say aye. Meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Any changes?
Motion approved, agenda is presented.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. He beat you, Dan.
Right. I think I got it timed away.
Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, agenda is set. Okay, let's start off with Jared, Engineers Report.
I would like me to stand.
Wherever you want.
There.
You're good.
Facing the TV here. You know what I have.
You're good.
All right, so you should have the agenda in front of you. I want to do it just backwards here tonight because the one item with the water project takes a little bit longer, so generally day-to-day, New York Bullock Works Department, not a lot going on. I'll stick around here at the end. I think Dave had some quote on some manhole rehabs that are not on my agenda. But Expedition Estates, we have met with and been in contact with Williams Building Company. I did get the email from them a couple days ago. They're the ones doing Expedition Estates. Sounds like they are gonna hire us for some construction engineering, which would be staking some inspection, but they're planning to redo that subdivision. Poor guys. They're planning to do it as early in the spring as they can, but obviously they're held up here. Their whole goal is to have it done sometime in June because they want to build houses, right? And that's their business. And they want to make money. You can't make money unless you can do construction, so. As of right now, everything that I've seen, their plan for reconstruction, their plan to, for what they want to do passes the smell test. What our role will be is to, you know, guide construction, stake things, witness pressure tests, witness televising, generally be, you know, the eyes and ears out there and report to you if there's, you know, they're either passing or not passing, so. They are hiring us to do the construction engineering. There isn't going to be any cost to you guys and the whole thing, so if anything changes, we'll let you know, but as the plan for right now.
Have they signed a contract with the contractor?
I don't know.
I can't say for sure either, but I know they were still.
With Sutton visiting?
So, when we had the meeting with them that day, they made it sound like it was going to be a combination of their guys and the local guy, which is fine. It doesn't matter who does it. It's just, you know, we'll everybody the same level of work, but, yeah. Any questions? All right. So I would expect that to happen, you know, sometime as the frost comes out and load restrictions go away. Sanitary sewer stuff, I mean, just repeating on this, I won't take much time, but you have the power grants in place to do a bunch of televising. That's pretty much going to wrap up all the televising of the clay pipes you have in town. Your deliverable will be an engineers' report from us, so we'll look at videos or photos of bad spots and I'll kind of show you guys a summary of what's good, what's bad, you know, what needs to be done and go from there. So that, that's slated for the spring. I don't have an update there. There are a couple spot repairs you guys already know about. I would expect that there will be more, so we'll deal with that when it comes, but hopefully, hopefully not, but there probably will be. And then the water project, so generally we have three contracts. We have two funding sources. I keep repeating this, but we're essentially done with the project, right? It's energized, it's being used. We're intentionally keeping Tan's contract open to run additional work through them, but you guys recall, I mentioned this before, but we have two change order requests from Tan, and change orders are, can be any number of things. They can be something that you guys request work to be done. They give you a proposal for work to be done. This falls into the category of they want extra compensation for something, so it's kind of the harder of them, but we've met with Tan about three times in the last six months. Initially, we denied their two change order requests and they met with us. We actually had a meeting with Dan and me and Monty, Monty and Dave and the people from Tan to look at these two items and then talk about them. You guys probably saw within the stuff we sent on Friday, you got a two-page where we recommend going with this or how we recommend resolving it. Essentially, they're requesting about $50,000 worth of work on two areas. We did not agree with them and we think that there's some grayness to it and they probably are warranted some payment for a few of the things. Do you want me to go into the letter or do you guys all get a chance?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm just gonna keep going then. Generally, item number one on bluegrass, they're requesting about $11,000 for concrete work that was done. We didn't expect any concrete work to be done. About, and at the end of it, what it comes down to is that some of it, we actually agreed when we met with them, did need to be done because of the proximity of the pipe to the curb. Couldn't be saved, so. I would say we were wrong to deny that and we do recommend making that payment. The other portion of it, which they had curb and gutter fall onto the transdering construction because they had soil caving, that I would call carelessness or they didn't use proper construction techniques to do that, so we would not approve or recommend payment for that, so. Generally, that item's about $11,000 bucks and we do recommend the payment of $6,500 to cover the work that was necessary, that we should have had probably in the bid for doing bluegrass. I will say too, it's hard to, you guys always know where pipes go when you're designing things, so. All in all, on the next payment estimate for Tan, I am going to recommend paying them for some additional curb and gutter on that block. So I think they were ready to argue with us, but. The other item here is work at the trigger plant, high level. They bid on the project, it's about $1 million job. Their filter base removal portion of the job is about $20,000 bucks. We maintain that we didn't do anything wrong, that it's, their bid is their bid. However, when they were removing the concrete filter base, or the filter basins, excuse me, they were steel. And as soon as they chopped them apart, cut them apart, turned out there's two feet of concrete on the bottom. So their argument was that nobody could have seen that, that it wasn't known and that they spent about $35,000 then removing those bas- $35,000 extra dollars removing those basins. And their argument is that they or anybody that would have gotten into construction would have politely requested additional compensation for that work and I guess, I don't know if another contractor would have requested that. We did originally deny it. They do make a strong case and I could see that they did spend the time doing it, so I don't think their bid was very good, let's say. If their bid was $20,000, according to this, it should have been 60 to do this work because that's what it took them. Tracked their time, you know, logged it, watched them work, so their bid was poor. Their argument again is that anybody would be requesting additional payment. And my argument is, well, it's not a problem, but they want to be paid for all of it, right? I mean, their stance is they don't want to meet the middle, but where I'm at, when I look at it and I look at the hours they spent and the other contractors' bids, I believe we can justify an additional $15,000 because that does keep them below the next lowest bidder, which would be way near construction.
That's, I was just going to ask you what number that was.
Bids were very tight and I have a ethical problem making a larger payment on this that would have put them, you know, more expensive than the next lowest bidder, so. That's where I, where I, I say it's hard to justify an additional $35,000 for $36,000 of what they're requesting, but I, as long as you keep it below $15,390, we're not exceeding way near constructions bid and I feel like there's some wiggle room in the contract there. And as you guys know, we're 60% cost share here from the State Water Commission on this work, so it's... I guess I'm bringing this to you is I think that's a reasonable settlement amount. They're requesting 50. Between these two items, we would agree about 21 and I don't think we're stretching anything. I think it's, it's pretty easily justifiable, but it's, well, it's not paying everything we want. Expect to have some discussion. If you approve it, then I'm basically going to take back to them and say, this is the maximum amount that we can cover on your amount and then see where they want to go from there. Whether that's, you know, resolving it or meeting again or getting attorneys involved. I'm not certain.
So 60% cost share, cost terms, 19, let's say.
So between the two? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
60% grant, so 40% cost share. The opposite, your cost would be about 8.
One's at 8?
Yeah. I will say, so here's a picture of the caving. So in that area, we're not paying for the curb and gutter on that block, but where we had to get close to it was a different story, I guess.
Is that on the curve?
No. No, that's the straight part. There's two driveways right there. Basically, John made him take that out because it was undermined and we couldn't, you know, couldn't put it back very well, so. Made him take it out and pay for it, or we're not going to pay him for it, I guess.
So then on the other projects, I guess, that they did, you know, like the water tower itself, you know, if their, their bid was in, their bid was in, I mean, their bid was in like $80,000 or they tore that water tower down in like a day and a half, you know, I don't think that would...
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, I mean, I think there's in... Even on that project, it went, I guess, a lot...
Smoother?
Lot smoother, yeah, you know, versus the other projects, so I mean, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's hard. It is, I mean, it's... Everything we're doing here is, you know, we've got a construction contract for them to do things. If they bid, you know, all these dollar amounts and that our plans say to do this, they can, they can argue and we generally don't get the money back if something does go smoother. And I, I can't say if it was smoother or not. I mean, it appeared to be. Everything else did appear to go smooth, Casey, so. Hard to say.
Was it Tan that took the water tower down?
Yes. Well, they have sub, they have invite. They have their invite to do that, that mission part, so I don't know what they paid Dwight to do it, but, yeah. You have any, does anybody have any, I half expected Tan to be here tonight and they may still be here at the next meeting if they're not satisfied with whatever we come to at this point because, you know, they're tough. They're not gonna just, they're probably not gonna just accept where we're at, but I feel like it's a fair fair decision and wanted to include you guys in it and explain the justification for recommendations coming from, I guess.
I'm comfortable with Jared's recommendation. I think there's good detail in it that shows that we're communicating with these folks and that we recognize there was additional stuff that they didn't have a lot of control on. So with that being said, I would make a motion that we approve that the change order payment in the amount of $21,500 to Tan.
Maybe a motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Ovenhour.
All right.
Okay, so I think the way this is going to play out is that I'm going to go back to them with an approved change order five for that dollar amount, so it's going to say their amount that they requested was about 50 and it's going to kind of show offset and it's going to show approve 21 and then, like I said, we'll go from there. They'll either approve it or we'll be back here talking about it in two weeks. I'm not certain. But I did give them this letter and tipped them off on what I was going to recommend and, you know, I don't see them here, but I'm not certain.
Okay.
All right, beyond that though, we are still working with Tan. You know, not the boogeyman. They do good work. We are, you know, you guys approved some change orders of the variety where you requested a shore from them at the last meeting and so they will be here in town. We do have a mud hole in a spot up by Murray's. I want us to say on camera that it's, it's got to get addressed. It probably will not be addressed by tomorrow's snowstorm, unless if you guys say it has to be, I would say use your own crews and we'll have to backcharge them for something like that, but as of right now, it's a mud mess and it'll just have to get through the next storm here. And then we do have a punch list. I know Dave and Monty, when they see stuff or when they get calls or when they get told of things, they relay that to us. Tan addresses things. The way punch list items work are warranty items, right? So Tan's warranty, we're running out this fall in about October. So we see things that, you know, aren't the way they should be or leaking water, you know, whatever it is, that all gets addressed, you know, at no cost, but. I think that's all I have. Our board, Monty, is that right? Okay. Well, I'm just sticking around through the, at least through the sewer manual and then if anything else comes up, let me know.
Thanks, Terry.
Yep.
Sixty local permit for bingo for Hayes and Chamber Commerce and this will be, the permit will last the entire year, right, Monty?
It'll end at the end of the year, though.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Motion by? Hack. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving down to eight, variance consideration. Flaggers.
Now, as I indicated in my notes, I'm not sure how you want to proceed on this. I know we have in the past kind of conditionally approved the variance that all the other conditions are complied with. He is proposing, or is hoping to purchase a lot up by the school and turn your head to look at the picture. This is the structure he would like to bring in. It'll be his residence plus he intends to operate a home-based business out of there as indicated. In our zoning, permitted uses in this district are single-family dwellings, but it doesn't include mobile homes, which in my mind, this is a mobile home based on the information, the worksheet that he had. So there again, you have the authority as the board to determine if there's any variance to allow that type of structure there or if it has to be something else.
And that's on the lot, right beside the basketball court there?
Yes, it is.
Do we know what kind of business?
He's making signs, wooden signs that he, he had some for Atol, that's recent event that he had made for, has prizes for different things. Just kind of small shellac router signs and engraved signs.
Was he planning on bringing in just that mobile home or was he planning on help building for his business or?
At this point, it was just a mobile home.
So I'm kind of wondering, if that business grows, is he going to want to put up the home or shed or, you know what I mean? I don't know.
So you said, right now, our existing zoning ordinance does not allow for trailer houses in that spot?
No, it does not. It does allow for dwelling modular unit sectional home, but this is basically a trailer frame with a hitch where those modular sectional home generally, the trailer is, or the frame is removed and it's set on foundation and...
Right.
Or if you want to get him here to actually explain his intentions in long term.
I don't know if we really need to have him come in here, but if he, you know, if he wants to express to you some more of his, what's going on, can you bring it to us, Monty? I, I'm not in a huge favor of bringing in a trailer house into an area that's been... I'm just not in favor of bringing a trailer house into those spots. That's just my opinion.
Would he be fixing that trailer house to the lot or would he just have it sitting there on the trailer? Is he going to, do you have any ideas? Would he be putting in concrete pillars and things like that?
Basically, since it's, it looks like it's a pre-owned, it would have to be on pillars. So, yeah, it would basically be a fixed thing to the lot.
Okay. Monty, you don't hear much. We don't need to make a motion to deny. We just don't take action. That's kind of what I think I'm hearing. No action being taken right now. We'll move on. Nine eight, water sewer.
Okay, as a water and sewer, there is an exhibit this evening that folks could get their by team to perform the repair, modification, restructuring with five additional manholes, bases within the manholes throughout the city. The team has looked for one that, that offer of the ones that were done and I see this in part, talked to the boys the other day as we were looking through the details on this and we have some that, that I think require or should be taken care of sooner than later and then a couple of them are probably looking more so as preventative maintenance to give us long-term performance and better performance with the level. The company key charges $3,500 for mobile location, so what I'd like to do is, I'd like to see us go after these five that they've given us a floor for. The challenge at hand is that we have some unexpected barriers. This calendar year already, so the money that we got put in this year have been being used, but we have, we do have some fullback money that is available for lift stations and the manholes and stuff like that and I see this type of expense already in the last year or two years that's gone up on a, on a per location rate. So I don't see it getting any cheaper as we move forward. So tonight I'd like to make a motion that we approve the installation of five bottoms and it hurts by key contracting in the amount of $18,500 and then we would utilize a couple of our category of reserve funds that are subject to this particular type of work.
Okay, we have a motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye. Motion carried. Thanks for putting the time in on that, Dan.
The water boy just said, "Tell overwork, aye." But thank you, it's down.
Anything else, Dan?
I had a conversation this week with Paul Dole, as everybody is probably aware, he's going through a major overhaul, if you will, of the car wash of the Senate Station. He and I had a lengthy conversation. We're still seeing suspended solids, sand coming through and because we modified that manhole there, the issue at hand has moved from that manhole down, the piping down that street and so we've got some plug in there, so I had conversations with Paul, he's going back to the manufacturer, the car wash. He said right now, they said the design that they had in there is the design that's used for similar installations everywhere, basically. But he's going to reach out to this provider and have some conversation with regards to possibly putting a filter that can have a sock, for to simplify terms, or if it's directed at the C of that, might be able to help us out. And so with that being said, Jared, if you guys could maybe ponder that a little bit, see if you're mind if you think that that might be a viable option to help us out, to be the option, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Dan, do you recall or Dave, have we ever had that line cambered from that manhole all the way back to the car wash to, you know, is there, is there another spot where all these solids can be coming from? Is there a separation in the pipe or in the liner? I don't know, but, you know, before, five years ago, we never had this issue with, with all these solids in there, right? It was, it's...
I don't know, part of it was cambered, but I'm not exactly sure. The whole run wasn't because they actually came through it and there was some of the sand. Their motorized camera would get stuck in the sand or whatever, so it needed to be completely cleaned to get the camera all the way through. But I don't think we went from the manhole in the street back towards the Senate's building. I don't believe.
I would think that that'd be, you know, just to rule something out, I guess, if nothing else, because we've been talking about this for three years, it seems like that's... How many times, how many times are we over there? Month to month now to flush that thing?
Uh, I don't know if, yeah, I was...
Eight weeks?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
The last time they adjusted actually the manhole dog, it was actually completely plugged solid.
From just solids, from just dirt?
Just sand, or they had a pretty good picture. I don't know if they sent that photograph to Dan or...
Yeah, I got the pictures of it. So, you know, like, we were just speculating in our conversations, but we are seeing a lot more movement of sand in Mercer County here and when you did that... And when you did that turbulence of the water flowing through there, you think back to your chemistry experiments in high school when you try to suspend solids into, into the liquid. You know, you've got a lot of turbulence and stuff that those solids are gonna flow along with. And Paul said that each car wash is using about 60 to 65 gallons of water, not all in one big surge. But it is a fair amount of water, and so the challenge of having that settle out when you have that much water moving, and you've got, on a good basis, you know, you've probably got six to, six to a dozen cars lined up in it that are succession going, going, going. I'm not finding it open in their, their design, but if they have some smart guys getting together, they can, they can also solve such a solution that would meet everybody's needs on this.
Well, it's, you know, it's really too bad that they couldn't come up, there would be more money for Senex. A gutter system with like a septic tank to hold it. And then they hire a rotor river to come in and clean it. I mean, that's what you see in a lot of these bigger car washes.
Paul said he, he has somebody coming in and pumping those songs there. Way more regulated than he had in the past. Ever since we started seeing the issues coming at hand, he's increased the, the times in which they come out there and they do that, so he's, he's not sitting on his laurels by any means. He's supporting the community and trying everything that he can on his side, so... That's where I'm hoping, you know, I, I told him that I was gonna ask more, to give him a little bit, to maybe get another set of eyes on it. And see if, in another community, if they got something similar to that, how they might be able to, to address the issue.
Thanks, Dan. Now, it's pretty flat, too. It's not, there's not a lot of slope there for, for movement, which doesn't help either, but...
Sure.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dan. Streets.
About the only I got that I talked to Dave with last week is, we had that reinforcement done on our plow with the gate. And we also, Dave and I talked about our cylinder issue, which we think we have solved that problem. So what the problem was on the cylinder is, well, the gate, what the reinforcement is, should be good, Dave's gonna monitor that, more frequent looks at it, but the cylinder issue is what I was thinking about the most. What was happening was, it was traveling past the extension. So if you can imagine a cylinder, it bangs and it slaps. And with harp cylinders with the cap of the internal snap ring, it makes sense to me that if it was stroking an extra quarter of a stroke, if that, it's gonna eventually blow that seal out, or that snap ring. So, Dave, what did you say, you put in about an extra half?
We put an extra half inch of against the bumper when it bottoms off, it was actually not really bottoming out, it was bottoming out the cylinder. So now we added another plate on the bumper, so when it hits that, the cylinders have bottomed out, so it should take the pressure off the cylinders. And it seems to be working out.
We'll find out in the next few days.
Yes.
And then, Dave and I also talked about, the last time we did revamp work on pins and, and what have you on the other plow was five, six, seven years ago?
Yep.
Where, yeah, you know, holes egg out and pins were out, and we're gonna look at that in the off-season. I think a little more preventative maintenance would might help our problems maybe, so. And then we're all ready for about four to 17 inches or so.
Are you doing like cutting edges?
Good. We should have some leftovers throughout the summer for next fall.
And I know Jared mentioned having some patch jobs done. I know the Union Bank weighing off their calling, they, because, you know, we had that break right in the driveway. They want to make sure that, that's part of those patches done, and they might even want to hire whoever does it to do some more of their parking lot.
Yeah, when the break occurred or whatever, yeah, he was talking about having some other additional parking lot.
Yeah, so he just called and said, "Don't forget about me."
Yeah, I called out measuring the walls today, the stone's getting off of them, I'll try to get some dimensions and stuff, so we can get figured out what kind of product we're gonna involve the material for asphalt.
Yeah, I see in Bill Swanson's parking lot, that's, that was concrete. Did we cut that out?
On his, or the?
No, right in Bill's parking. Looks like about a seven or eight foot square, that's just mud right now, and I didn't know.
I can't remember if that was on our side or his side of the curb stop, that was when Ryan and Dick were still here.
It's almost touching the street, so, so I would say it's probably ours, but I don't know, we'll see.
I can find out on that. Because we'll have to probably do some work on that apron from old age in our block building, because the curb stop was in the grass. But that gave up, that we changed, we had to cut some of that concrete apron out of there, so we'll have to size that out.
Right. Okay. And then, I know it's weird to talk about it with the weather it is, but the tarring, are we getting ready for that? What's that look like? Because the cracks are starting to open up pretty good, and, you know, the frost.
We're pretty much ready once the frost is out and it's, you know, snow's gone, basically, from there.
We have problems.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, but I informed them how much we would need this year, and we should be able to get get as much of, oh, the whole thing done this year, hopefully.
Yeah, okay, great. So last year, we had a hard time getting...
Yep, getting tarred, they were short, but, yeah, they called, or I talked to them earlier, and they were gonna, I told them we gave around 2,600 gallons of whatever, and they said that wouldn't be a problem this year.
Okay. Sorry to belittle the point, but if we have to ridge up Main Street and plow it, we can't haul it out anywhere, can we? Everything's too soft to...
Being too soft to haul anyways, no. We had one other spring where we just made the windrow and we just lived with it. Some of it we did all, and we could dump it on the ditches all by the shop.
By the shop, okay, yeah.
Off of Main there, dump it in the ditches, we can do that.
Yeah, because that's, that was the other thing I was gonna mention, we argued, we had two, almost three days of plowing, and I drove around a little bit after school, and a lot of our areas where it was damming up in the water, it's starting to, I mean, even, even the ditch coming from County 27 into town, it's, it ran quite a bit, so, I mean... I know, I know the dump site over by the school, it's...
If we had to, if we take it up to the, where our recycle pile is out there, where those cars are...
Yeah, that would be hard, we could get it off there.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on. Unless you got anything else, Jason? Casey, I think it's Bussing Library.
I don't have anything this time.
Okay. Police fired.
Well, all I got is the new police vehicle, we're still waiting on graphics. The vinyl supposedly just finally got shipped out. I'm gonna go talk to Jim about it, still have no idea when it's gonna show up, so I'm gonna see if he'll just put the vehicle in service without details on it. Kind of use it as a non-mark patrol vehicle for now. I did visit with Monty earlier today about putting the ad on on Facebook, asking people to please remove their vehicles from the street if the city has to go out and plow. And I'll visit with Dave or Jim about that, too, in case we do have to tow some vehicles out of the way. Try to be a little proactive on that, but, that's all I got.
And applications for a police officer position?
One.
So far. One, we got one. All right, Buster.
All right, so I'll talk a little bit about the partners and planning grant. We did get a preliminary look at some of the materials. Haven't made it through all of the materials as of yet, there's still a piece that needs to get updated. And then that information, we'll, we'll sit down and have a conversation with Marty. And then I think after that point in time, we'll be ready for getting it in your hands in terms of where you, how you want to look at it. It's pretty detailed. There's, of course, lots of comments. You know, the narrative is quite lengthy, I'll just say that much, and then, and then the piece that this, that the more engineering is doing, that's, that's over 100 pages itself. We've got to cut all the maps, I guess I need to get updated and whatever, but, but no, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a fine document once we get it, and then what I started to do is, went through some of the information and have done a little bit of cutting and pasting from the standpoint, so if I need to go on and talk, which I'm guessing I'm probably going after sometime, I could probably highlight a little bit of it rather than, you know, pick out the high points and maybe some low points, that type of thing. And, you know, our timeframe on that is really actually May, and May is not very far away. And, you know, the only other thing that I had put a request in for some reimbursement from Department of Commerce and back in December, and we still haven't seen anything from that, which would be about half of the reimbursement, half of the grant that we should, and so I'm kind of, you know, I was hoping that we would have those dollars, because there, of course, there's other places where we can do so. Be that as it is, I'm sure it'll, it'll come in. The other bit of information that I could share with you is this, we had a kind of a, I call it a mini McEd meeting, just a meeting of the minds, Beaver and myself and Kerry, Cutting and Ian McConnell, they were our grant writers that helped out considerably last year with all of our grants. And after visiting with them, and what we would, what we are going to be proposing is, is that we would, that we would keep those folks on probably some kind of a retainer, but not necessarily in a capacity as to where they would do the actual grant writing themselves. It would be more from the standpoint of keeping them on board because of the knowledge that they have that they could offer for projects like that. And so I think that's the direction we're gonna move in the future. We do have, Beaver was over the other day, and so we did put together a calendar of future McEd meetings, as well as a calendar of future Mercer County Coalition meetings. And that hasn't actually gone out as of yet, but it will go out probably by the end of this week, those dates and times. We do have a McEd meeting coming up next Tuesday. And that's going to be, I think, a very, a pretty important meeting in terms of some of the discussion that we're going to be having relative to some things in Mercer County.
What time, Buster?
That's a five o'clock meeting. We changed the start times on the McEd meetings from, from four to five, and then the Coalition meetings are all set for 5:30 starts, so.
So you're all welcome to attend any Mercer County Economic Development meetings, you're more than, you're...
Absolutely.
Actually, we'd like to have you there, it's, so, I know it doesn't always fit in schedules, but instead of reading one in the paper, or just hearing reports from Buster, or hearing from me, it's in a short span here, if you get deeper into it, you could, we'd love to have you come to those meetings, but...
We have equalization on April 11th at 5:30.
April 11th at 5:30.
Oh, really? Well, who missed that on their calendar? Okay.
Okay, well, well.
But the other thing that I would just add, too, is, is if you, if you, if you couldn't make the McEd meetings and you'd like to come to the Coalition meetings, which is, that, the intent of the Coalition meeting is, is a little broader. It supposedly involves, all the mayors get invited, planning and zoning folks, you know, those kinds of things.
County Commission.
County Commission. The idea is, is so that we could keep everybody on the same page in terms of what's happening countywide. Because sometimes, there's little pockets of people that don't know really what's going on in the county, you know, and it, and with what's coming down the pipe in terms of future, certainly what it looks like, people are, I'm sure, going to want to be more aware of what's, what's going to be there, and the possibilities and those kinds of things, so. With that, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Buster. Monty, did you send Keith Baines that wrote to everybody his response?
I can't believe I did.
Okay, there we go, Keith Baines, so we did send, had a letter of opposition to the, to the bill banning books at the library, and we did send that in, and Keith Baines did get back to us, and he did not support our position as gonna stay steady and firm on this stance, but if you didn't get to read the letter, take a, take a look at it, goes into more depth than that, so. All right. Ten A, Endur, annual meeting is in Bismarck on May 10th at the Heritage Center. Everybody's welcome to go to that, it's a free meal. And you get to the Institute of Insurance talk.
Yeah, just let me know, and I can hire a VP for you.
I've done before, I've done numerous times, and it's, you know, it's, it's good discussion, it's just another thing to fit in your schedule. What was that, Dan?
One day and a half.
It's about, it's about three hours, is what it is. All right, audit representation letter. Monty?
Basically, this is, you know, it's always completed in conjunction with our audit. It's basically stating that we gave them all of the information they requested, that we're following the guidelines to the best of our knowledge, and that we are currently no pending litigation against the city.
Sounds good.
So I will have President Ovenhour sign that along with myself and send it back to them.
Thank you. Tennessee, request for comments on the highway lighting project. Is that supposed to be a public input, Monty, or?
Yeah, they will be doing other, or additional public meetings on it. They just wanted some responses from us to start with. It was sent to the Bussing and to the board. Basically, at, long and short, if we don't respond, it basically means we're in favor of the project, so... You know, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to just say it, then, you know, that we appreciate what they're doing, and feel the project is a good thing.
Absolutely.
Or however you would say it.
It's a safety thing, that's... Great. Even that's still slated for next summer, '24?
That would be '24, yeah.
All right.
Unless there's somebody who doesn't like the project.
No, I say some dollars up.
Me, too. You don't need a motion, do you, Monty?
No, I will just respond that we take no formal position, but we do, do appreciate what they're doing.
Thank you. All right, nothing on the old business. On the new business, we have one item, we have the grad, graduation book advertising opportunity through the paper. I think this, do you have that up there? There it is. Monty and I discussed this the other day, and I don't think there's much of a need for us to take out a full-page or even a half-page sponsorship, and, you know, a lot of the, I think the $50 ones are individual, sponsoring individual students. And then to get your name below the student's photo, I believe, that's the way. Dan, do you know anything more about that?
I don't know much about it, I believe so, too. I know, I know there are individualized advertising things.
And I think this is a fantastic opportunity. It doesn't really help us a ton for, for our visibility and sponsorship, but it does show us some support of our, of our students, and you know, I would, I'd be in favor of doing a $50 thing, but not going towards a specific student. It'd be just in general, a sponsorship and support of the, of the graduating class advertisement, so. I don't know if anybody else had any thoughts when they saw that or not.
Yeah, I like the idea of supporting it, but not tying it to any particular student. So I would think, I think a motion that would go ahead and approve a fifty-dollar donation to this cause, but not tie it to any particular student.
Okay, Motion by Pillar. Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Oh, we're spending money. It's a roll call, sorry.
Pillar.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. My daughter would be disappointed if we don't have her name and your picture. Too bad. Do over it. All right, Public Comments. I don't know if you have some public this evening, approval of the bills.
Motion to approve the bills as today.
Yeah, motion by Pillar, second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you all.